At this time, we have a prayer, then the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Reverend Duck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's pray. Ah gracious God, you are so wonderful to us in just such a manifold way, and we give you thanks. We give you praise for our community. We thank you for the people. We thank you for the FFA that's here tonight from the Appomattox County High School. And we just pray tonight in all that is accomplished through the Appomattox Town Council, that Lord, it would certainly bring great good to this community. And just bless each council member, bless their homes, their families, each staff member of this town. We just pray your blessings upon them. God, direct, may your will be done, and may you be glorified in all things. In Jesus' name, amen.
Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Well, like I said, it's good to see a good crowd out here tonight. Glad y'all were able to attend. We are going through times of change with the changing administration at the federal level, our new executive, and many new members of Congress. But realize, a lot of the stuff that gets done for the people here is done here at the town council level. We make a big impact. We, hopefully, it's a beneficial impact to all. And with that, our first item of business is our recognition to the Appomattox FFA chapters 24, 25. I'd like to read a proclamation at this time. Proclamation honoring the Appomattox County High and Middle School 2024, 2025 FFA chapters. Whereas FFA and agricultural education provide a strong foundation for the youth of America and the future of food, fiber, and natural resource systems. And whereas FFA promotes premier leadership, personal growth, and career success among its members. And whereas agriculture education and FFA ensure a steady supply of young professionals to meet the growing needs in the science, business, and technology of agriculture. Whereas the FFA mono, learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, living to serve, gives direction and purpose to those students who take an active role in succeeding in agricultural education. And whereas FFA promotes citizenship, volunteerism, patriotism, and cooperation. Whereas the Appomattox County High School and Appomattox Middle School have agricultural education programs with 100% membership in the National FFA organization. Therefore, the Appomattox Town Council hereby designates the week of February 15th through the 22nd, 2025, as National FFA Week. Glad you're here. You are the leaders of the future. Just remember that. Learn. Learn from your advisors. Learn from other members of the community. Don't feel afraid to ask a question, because if you don't know, the best way to learn it, even when you're as old as I am, is to ask a question. So, thank you all for coming out. So, at this time, we'll go ahead and I'll present you with the proclamation, and we'll take a picture out front.
Sometimes we don't...
Yeah, we usually... They look so scared.
All right. Very good. Oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Very proud of you and all your accomplishments, and accomplishments too, Tom.
Thank y'all.
Thank you so much.
Hey. They can stay. I'll let my little one stay.
You want to check in when he says "my little one"?
You're a college.
She's always going to be my baby girl. This town will entertain any citizen comment to come before the council. All right. Next, the adoption of consent agenda. All matters listed under this consent agenda are considered routine by the council, will be approved or received by one motion in the form listed. Items may be removed from the consent agenda for discussion under the regular agenda upon motion of any council member and duly seconded. Specific items, January 13th, 2025, regular council meeting, and January 28th, 2024 workshop meeting. Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no. As have the motion carries. Unfinished business, consideration to appoint one member of the town council to the Town of Appomattox Economic Development Authority. Though I had selected Timmy earlier, he is withdrawn because of his many obligations. I've talked to Mr. Boyce, and he has willingly accepted the potential appointment. Is there anyone else? Any other comments? Any that are, entertain a motion to approve Mr. Jim Boyce as our town council representative on the Town of Appomattox Economic Development Authority?
So moved.
Let's second it.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no. As have the motion carries. Any new business to come before the council at this time?
So, I wish you did have one citizen comment. We just didn't... I don't think you actually knew, like, how to approach that, so, I wish you... So, like, I wish you could backtrack to the one citizen comments?
Go ahead.
Yeah. Did you want to come up?
I gave Cindy the questions.
Oh, okay. All right, good.
Cindy, if you would, you can present those questions to us.
She called me this morning and said that, what was his name?
David.
David? Was going to get, I gave her the question so that he could get me the information that I want, give him a heads up, so that I could get my questions answered in full.
That's the mayor asking.
Quite all right.
I don't know anything.
Got you.
I'll let y'all look at him, pass him back.
So, wrap it all the way around and get it right to him.
I was reading about where do the questions go.
Yeah, anytime you have a question, that doesn't always take the council to answer those questions. Our town manager is very capable.
That's why I brought him in, so that she'd know where to put them, and she's been a wonderful person to work with.
Well, we appreciate that.
I assume these are the questions regarding the sewer rates?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yes.
Any of that, like I said, can be directed to our staff. They're very capable of answering most of the questions. We appreciate any information you're providing us, or any concerns you have that are not being met by your request to our staff, but feel free to ask them at any time, present the questions.
You don't have to wait until we have a meeting.
No.
You can call and say that you have some questions and concerns, and Mr. Campbell will get right back with you.
With our utilities directory returns, I'll speak with him, give him these questions, and we'll make sure we get something back to you. Now, if you so desire, there are business cards for all members of the council and key members of staff out front, so please feel free to take them with you.
We've been very happy since we moved here.
Where are you from?
Originally Ohio. '97, we moved to Concord. Three years ago, we moved back to Ohio and decided we wouldn't be there. Back where we belong. And when we moved to, we decided we wanted to come to Appomattox to live. We just liked everything they had to offer.
Where in town do you live? Where in town do you live?
Plant Drive.
Okay.
We can walk a distance to everything. I just love it.
Including two council members and the mayor.
I have a sister-in-law who lives in Plant, on Plant Drive.
Where at?
Jerry Bernado.
Which address?
Oh, I don't know. My place right across the street.
She's on the corner.
It's right after North Avenue.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yep, yep. It's the first house there.
I live down by the big cat.
I think, is it?
No, it's not the first house.
Oh, it's the second?
No, it's not the second. You have to put in a...
Oh, a little bit further, okay.
She's one of the new houses.
There's some trailers across the street from...
Mrs. Wallace directly across the street from me.
Welcome back to our community, and we're glad that you chose to come deeper into the heart of Appomattox and live in the town specifically. And like I say, we are more than happy to get any questions answered, any situations resolved as best possible for the benefit of the community. All right. With that, is there any new business?
We don't get too much attention, so I'm sorry.
Is there any...
How many plasmas do you want?
We have that already covered.
Oh, okay. You got one of those on there.
Yes, more than. Yes, ma'am. So, is there any new business to come for the council?
So, this is one, I'm sorry I haven't spoken to any of you guys about this. I just thought of it, and I don't know if y'all may have addressed it last meeting or else. We might have done it a while ago, but I think Rob did a good job that we needed him to do. If we would consider some sort of just recognition of that, I'm not saying give him a brand-new car or something, and we don't have to come up with, if y'all want to do that, we don't need to come up with it tonight, but just something...
Thank you.
Has been on my mind.
Okay. Well, he has another month to continue in his capacity as interim during the transition period that is moving forward at a very good pace, it seems, in my humble opinion. All right. All righty. Council Standing Committee reports, finance.
Nothing.
Infrastructure.
I don't, we don't have any.
I have one question. How's the progress at the depot? Is it all done?
Yeah, we finished painting. We still got to do the plumbing, wait for it to get a little bit warmer to do the plumbing, and the lighting, and drops in.
On the eastern end of the depot are three rooms, well, approximately three rooms and other alcoves in there. We have, at the leadership of Mr. Garrett, worked on making this space more usable, more pleasant atmosphere. We've got some plans in the not-too-distant future, hopefully with the centennial, the Appomattox Seco Centennial, 150 years coming around the corner, that we, no, actually, no, it is 100 years, excuse me, it's centennial, that we are able to put our displays and stuff for the centennial in that area. All right. Mr. Kim, our town manager's report, sir.
Yes, sir. So, just FYI, EDA meeting's been postponed due to weather, so that'll, the date will be determined with everyone's availability. We have, some of you may be aware, we have a sewer line failure in Confederate Avenue. It's pretty substantial. It's, when I say failure, the sewer is still flowing. We haven't had a, the road collapse or anything like that, but I personally looked at the CCTV footage of the lines. It's a substantial project. It's a substantial, we're talking thousands of feet of failed sewer line. So, I've authorized CHA to pursue emergency grant money for this, and I'll just keep you all updated as, as information comes in, as it develops. Like I said, right now, we're not, we're not, we don't have any environmental concerns at this point, but we don't want to get there, and we don't want, we can't let this erode any further without addressing it. So, we're, we've got everything in the works.
How is the...
Is that multiple millions, or million, or...
I would, it's order of magnitude right now because of where we're at in the project, but from what I've seen from the CCTV footage, and if we can use pipe bursting and not open cut, probably two to three million.
How does something like that call? Like, what happened?
Well, the, so the Public Works Department has had CHA going around doing...
Checks.
CCTV lines, doing an inventory of infrastructure. So, just in the course of this, and these are things that you should do, right? Maybe every 10 years, it just depends on what you're looking at. So, they just went out to TV the lines, just like they've been TVing the other lines, where they, you know, have a little remote control car that goes through, and they saw it, and, you know, there's sections where there's, it's nothing but dirt. It's a dirt hole. So...
This is part of the project that we did analyzing that whole east side of town.
Yes. Yeah, as far as the identification, I believe, yeah, that's where it came from, I believe.
The last time we gathered all that information and did a full-scale project on the west side of town, I guess.
Yeah, and I think that's the intent here, but what we have is like, so, if you had a, I've done projects similarly, and we've graded the sewer line, and this is an F, which means now.
Where's the location of it?
I'd have to pull, I mean, it's thousands of feet of Confederate...
Like, it starts at the...
So...
Yeah, Confederate's long.
Yeah. You have to, excuse me, I've...
Would it be, like, near...
Bus shop, or further, you know?
Yeah, actually, no, I think it does, I think it does go up to the bus shop.
Yeah.
Bus shop.
And then, like, six structures down from there.
Like, going to the...
For instance, sewer plant.
Are the laterals, are the laterals on it affected, or is it just...
Well, if you have to, if you have to blow out the lines, we're probably going to have to do something with the laterals.
So, that's going towards Pine Street and Edgewood?
Yeah, I'm looking right now to confirm.
Back goes the way.
Okay.
It's back towards...
I thought they said towards the plant, sewer plant. That's towards us.
And if you would like...
What'd you say, Nathan, about...
That's going to be Christmas and birthday present.
That's going to be a good time.
Let's see. I wish I'd have thought to hook up to PowerPoint.
Well, that's okay.
Well, I'm glad they checked it, because it sounds like it could be bad if it...
Is that something BRA?
Yeah.
It's a project we've got going on.
Yeah, that's good, they checked it, though.
They told them about it.
Well, unfortunately, my permission has been revoked to get back into the folder for the consultant.
So, you will give back with us on...
Yeah, I will. Now, what I'll do is, is for the next meeting, is a work session.
Yeah.
I'll actually bring your presentation.
And we'll investigate funding.
Yeah, well, hopefully, we'll have some more information. You know, we really want to, as, even though I would call this fairly urgent, like I said, we don't, we don't have any safety issues yet, so we definitely want to try and see what we can do in the way of grant money.
Grants, yeah.
Before we, before we commit...
With our money.
Local dollars. You know, we want to see what timelines we're working with and what's available.
And I'm sorry to, I don't mean to be chicken-level, this guy's falling here to put you on the spot, but if there's open dirt, and what I'm assuming is a terracotta sewer line or...
It varies. There's actually a roded concrete pipe down there.
Is that, is that something that the DEQ or Foreman Health just hasn't gotten word of yet?
No, no, no. The only way that it would really become an illicit discharge is if it went anywhere.
Okay.
So, no, it's not really, I mean, it could be to our favor, it would be to our favor in seeking grant dollars, that the condition that it's in, and the possible environmental ramifications.
Okay.
So, that's the way to frame it, and that's the way to look at it, because that's what it is.
As opposed to our intending liability or...
Yeah, and, you know, it, if it was, we would, we would have signs, we would see, I mean, again, we have the TV, but if it was causing eroding, you know, erosion or something like that, if it was wandering out into some waters of the US or something like that, we would, we would know that.
Okay.
We would know that, so...
Okay.
I got to my report here.
It's not funny, I'm just laughing because you just came on board.
Yeah.
And splashed up in your line.
These are, these are, the good news is...
And I'm so glad that you did.
Something like this is what I'm built for, so...
Yeah, I'm glad you know about it.
The Church Street project, I just want to let you know, so VDOT wouldn't accept the asphalt, which I can't argue with. So, we are looking at having to mill and overlay the new surface, have it done a second time. That can't happen until we have temperatures, so I would expect Church Street to be repaved, hopefully in the spring, but it could be, you know, a couple months, it could be April, May, June, I'm not sure. In the meantime...
Is there a contract claim that we can make on that? I mean, doing so...
I'm withholding payment.
Okay.
The money's there.
Okay. So, it's contractor's liability?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's, there's so many easy ways to show that it was not put down correctly.
Great.
So, that's not a concern.
The fact that it's coming up is one of them.
I'm sorry?
The fact that it's coming up is one of them.
That's a very good point, but, you know, even just cores, you know, anything we need to do, intend to meet with Hurt and Profit, as they were our consultants for the project, overseeing quality control, to know what happened there. But, yeah, no, we, the last invoice they sent us, I caught, it actually has the billing for the service mix on it. And then, there's also retainage for the project, which is 5% of the project. So, for what amounts to probably $180,000 worth of work, we're sitting on maybe half a million.
Okay.
So, we should be fine. And lastly, but not least, I just wanted to say congratulations to David and Lee Carter. They had a baby boy on February 8th. So, that's, when David returns, David is our interim utilities director, I will attack him with these questions.
I don't have to like the answers, I just...
Yes, ma'am.
I like to know.
And, you know, since we have you all here, and I can actually talk to you all at the same time, if you have any questions for me, please feel free.
All right.
Holy cow.
That's just one of the challenges we have when it raises ugly head. We'll see how we can handle it best for the community.
It'll be okay.
If it makes y'all feel any better, through exploring the old historical minutes, I found in, I think, '83 or '84, the town took out almost a million dollars in debt at like eight or nine percentage.
Holy wow.
Yeah.
What was that for, did it say?
It was something that was, I, when I was reading it, I was like, oh, yeah, I guess I would do that, too, if that was all I had. But, you know, we're just, it's expensive to run a utility system, that's what happens.
The eighties were high-interest times, so, gosh.
Yeah.
You had presented us with a form for town council actions. If you'd like to go over that with us, we'd appreciate, I would appreciate it, I hope the rest will.
Sure.
If we got any questions, please, y'all ask him.
So, it's just basically a council action form, it's pretty, pretty standard for most places I've been, they have some form like it. The intent is to obviously organize the information for each agenda item. For example, future farmers, FFA wants a proclamation, you know, ideally what would happen is, is that maybe they might call me to say, hey, what do we need to do here? And then, I would say, well, I would recommend calling a council member or all of the council members to ask for sponsorship for a proclamation. Then you would contact me and let me know, this is a thing you want to do. So, at that point, Cindy or I would, would fill out this form. It had, you know, it has the what, when, where, why on it, what kind of action is requested. It's really useful for all of you for before the meeting, it's really, really useful for us after the meeting, in record-keeping. So, the idea is, is to make sure that we have things in, where they belong in the agenda, that we have the correct action taken for whatever item it is that we're, we're looking at. You know, there's a difference between a proclamation and, you know, an ordinance, and have something, may need a public hearing, something. So, this, this just all addresses that, and then, we would, every, every information packet would, that's the cover sheet. That's the cover sheet for the information packet for the agenda item. So, that's, that's the intent. And we will, our next meeting, those will be in use.
It's very organized, and it makes a lot of sense. I asked for an agenda item for this meeting, and I wasn't sure what the procedure was, so I called Cindy and talked to her about it, and if I'd have had this, and that's how we progressed through, telling you that I wasn't trying to circumvent our manager, but I start with you, because you write the agendas, you assemble the agendas, and send them out. So, and I said, let him know, let Mike know. So, this is a better way to do it, and it's in writing, and she doesn't have to say, Mary Lou said.
Right.
It's right here, and it works better. It's a great idea.
And all, and this works both ways. All agenda items, whether it's a council-sponsored, that's why I said staff slash council...
Right.
Whether, or sponsor, excuse me, whether it's a council item, or if staff needs to come before you and ask for something, you know, if this, the sanitary sewer issue, you know, whatever it may be, we don't have enough, we don't do enough here to require, you know, an agenda meeting every single time we have a council meeting.
Right.
So, what we're doing is, is if you have anything you want, please bring it to me. And the same is true for staff, they just bring it to me, and then, we can, I will know where it belongs.
You're right.
If it belongs, you know, what to do about it, and we can make sure everything gets done the way it should, so...
That's, it's an excellent idea. Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right. Anything else, sir?
No, sir, I don't, I don't think so.
All right. We'll move on to council comments. Ms. Allen?
I don't have any.
Mr. Boyce?
I'd like to maybe get an, an agenda item for the next workshop meeting. We need to nail down this MOU with our sheriff's department. We have got to let him know what kind of support we're going to give him, however it's going to look, if we're going to give him X amount of dollars a year, or, or a capital expenditure that we're going to have to stretch out over four years. I think we just need to let him know, number one, that we'll support him, and number two, what our support's going to look like.
The whole question, in my mind, we're stalled, because, you know, I spent a couple days, over the course of a few months, working with him and Frank.
That's the cover sheet for the information packet for the agenda item. So that's, that's the intent. And we will, our next meeting, those will be in use.
It's very organized and it makes a lot of sense. I asked for a, an agenda item for this meeting and I, um, wasn't sure what the procedure was, so I called Cindy and talked to her about it. And if I'd have had this, and, and that's how we progressed through, um, telling you that I wasn't trying to circumvent our manager, but I start with you because you write the agendas, you assemble the agendas and send them out. So, um, and I said, let him know, let Mike know. So this is a better way to do it and it's in writing and she doesn't have to say, Mary Lou said.
Right.
It, it's right here and it works better. It's a great idea.
And all, and this works both ways. All agenda items, whether it's a council sponsored, that's why I said staff slash council. Whether, uh, or sponsor, excuse me, uh, whether it's a council item or if staff needs to come before you and ask for something, you know, if this, the sanitary sewer issue, you know, whatever it may be. We don't have enough, we don't do enough here to, to require, you know, an agenda meeting every single time we have a council meeting.
Right.
So, uh, what we're doing is, is, um, if you have anything you want, please bring it to me. And the same is true for staff. They just bring it to me and then we can, I, I, I will know where it belongs.
You're right.
If it belongs, you know, what to do about it. And, uh, we can make sure everything gets done, uh, the way it should, so.
That's, it's an excellent idea, thank you.
Appreciate that. All right. Anything else, sir?
Uh, no, sir, I don't, I don't think so.
All right. We'll move on to council comments. Ms. Allen?
I don't have any.
Mr. Boyce?
I'd like to, uh, maybe get an, an, an agenda item for the next workshop meeting. We need to nail down this MOU with our sheriff's department. We have got to let him know what kind of support we're going to give him. However it's going to look, if we're going to give him X amount of dollars a year or, or a capital expenditure that we're going to have to stretch out over four years, I think we just need to let him know, number one, that we'll support him and number two, what our support's going to look like.
The whole question, in my mind, we're stalled. Because I, you know, I spent a couple of days, the course of a few months working with him and Frank on the, I guess, letter of the agreement, but it was just a question of if we're going to offer a car. And my whole point was, we just got to make up our mind on that. I don't, I don't think the monetary portion, I think we all agreed on the monetary portion, how the salaries and stuff adjust, because we're kind of far, it's set by the state in a lot of ways. But are we going to do a car now with, we were going to do it with ARPA money or are we going to commit every four years or not?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, and lay it out as a capital, a capital expense thing.
So, uh, for staff action to, to, you know, for there to be staff movement on that, we need council action. But that also needs to start somewhere, you know. I, I would think that you would, I know you've had the discussion repeatedly about this. The information would, you, you want to present the information. I mean, this, it really should be, um, this, this form is a perfect example. I mean, this is what we're asking for. This is what we're, you know, and this is what you, what you all would debate. And then you would decide what you want to do. Now, as, as I understand it, we have a memorandum of understanding existing with them. And we are not, we are not limited to, and, and to, to anything that's on that. The, the, the town is not restricted by that MOU to taking action. Conversations about, um, implementation, I mean, it's essentially taking it beyond the MOU, we're, it's a close, it's a closed session item. It's something for us to discuss, because as we're, now we're getting into contracts.
Well, I, I don't know. Because we, we talked to Frank about that, I think, very early on, but it, it was his opinion that turning it into something binding that we would expect, you know, that we'd provide explicit compensation for these specific tasks, tasks on a contractual basis. I don't know if we ever really wanted to go down that.
I don't think, I don't think we did, which, uh, which, again, we don't really need any new paperwork if that's, if that's the way you want to go. But you would still want to have proper council action on, you know, a budget amendment type thing. I mean, you know, you're, you're going to make an expenditure. Council's dictating an expenditure.
In, I guess, the origin of it is, I guess, my pushing, um, two years ago because I saw how the sheriff's stipend hadn't been adjusted in almost a decade or more. And I, it puts the sheriff in a weird spot where they have to come ask politically for a raise. And I think there were other pieces of that, like there's a nineteen eighties car or something referenced in the original agreement. So I, I just wanted to clean it up and simplify it a bit. But I agree with you, you know, in essence, it's a handshake and it just kind of says, we appreciate your law enforcement.
And the, the, the root of the matter too is, is that, um, in his way, the sheriff is no different than a director of a department. And he has a budget. And if he has budget needs, he needs to let people know. And I think he's more than willing to do that.
And I totally agree.
He may have done that already, I think.
I totally agree with that.
So, um, you know, it's not a, um, it certainly, I certainly wouldn't look at it as any kind of hat in hand type thing. I mean, it's just what we do, it's our business. So, you know, I, I would, I would hope that we would have a, a item here where he could, he could, or one of his representatives could say, this is what we need and this is why. And then you all could make whatever decision you wanted to make as far as what you wanted to buy them or stipend them or whatever you wanted to do. I mean, um, I think the nailing down the what has to come from the sheriff's department, because they're the only ones that know what they need.
He's already presented this.
He has. Okay, so you, if you have all that, then, you know, you could do a, um.
I think we need the formal document that says, here's what we plan on providing.
This is, this has all been done. The question is, are we going to commit to give him a car or whoever the sheriff is, commit to pay for a car and amortize it in our CIP over four years? And every four years, we're just going to spend that money or not? Like, we don't want to commit to a one-off car.
The initial car that we purchased was paid by ARPA funds. We had the money there to do that and so we didn't have to figure out where were we going to get it from.
And as far as managing the budget is concerned, you know, I, I, I really would like to take a look at what we're doing and, and, I mean, I'm not suggesting this because I have no idea. But it's entirely possible that whatever was agreed to thirty years ago was way too much. I mean, I'm not, again, I'm not saying that's the case. I doubt it very seriously. But I would like to look at this and see, you know, what, what it is and what the effect is on our budget. Because we also need to know that when we spend money, what that may impact in other places for the town, right? So I, I mean, I'm more than happy to jump on that, but it sounds like you guys have, have received a ton of information, so.
This one's kind of messy. I, I really hope that, you know, you'll be able to just give us a clean sheet of paper with, hey, this is my recommendation, we're going to vote on it.
And I am going to be, we, we just haven't had the time to actually set the meeting. But I'm meeting, like today I met with the Campbell County Administrator. I have a meeting with Ms. Adams this week. We'll be meeting with the sheriff hopefully next week. And obviously this will come up, so, um, so I can get my head wrapped around it a little better. I just, um, as you'll see moving forward, I'd, I'd like to see us be a little more organized and stringent with the budget. I, we have line items being more specific, not, you know, and, and understanding exactly where our dollars are going, pretty much, you know, to the cent. So that's, that's just kind of where I'm at on it. And I, I think that, uh, do you know, I mean, if he's been before you, uh, before and you guys have, have gotten all this information, where do you think he is in the timeline? I know that you, you definitely want to work with him, but is the need, I mean, we're, we're not talking about an emergency need.
No.
No.
It's not an emergency, but it's also, it can, the current agreement can last as long as you want it to. It's kind of like, you know, it, it kind of works, but it's not representative of.
Yeah, so I, like, I would, I would highly recommend, I mean, if this is palatable and it's obviously your decision, uh, all of your decision is, um, is the, is the council. I would highly recommend that we look at this as part of our budget process. And whatever we, is that we decide to allocate to the sheriff's department, whatever that may be, maybe it's more money and a car and whatever else, that it, it's something that we would give them July first.
That's what we do every year.
That's what we do.
Every budget year, we look at all of that. That's what we said, and, and I know we all know government. That is exactly what we said last year, that we would look at it this year. And I just.
We haven't got into the budget yet, working on the budget.
But I, I think we need to start looking at capital expenses as capital expenses. And if a car is fully loaded sixty, seventy, eighty thousand dollars, and I'd like to be able to see that a couple of years in advance and know, are we committing to this or not? Because it's also unfair, I think, to the sheriff accounting us for a car if we're not, if we're only going to do it if we're feeling like we got a windfall that's due this year.
Well, I, I totally understand and we should be, we should be, um, we could certainly have a, a, treat that like it's something that would go into CIP, which that's another thing we're, we're working on is a, a, you know, an actual, like a programmed out six-year type of CIP. But, um, the one thing about something like the, like a cruiser for the sheriff's department is, for the town, it becomes a sunk cost. There is no asset for us.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not really a CIP item.
Unless you retain the title on it. I think it's complicated, but, you know, it is something that we effectively get the, it's a durable good for us. I mean, we, we get the benefit from it over four or five years.
From an accounting perspective, we don't, we wouldn't, I mean, I'd assume, are you saying we, we would keep the title?
No, that's, um, big, you know, that's not.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, yeah, but like, we do. To me, it's, you know, it's a big enough expense to where I wouldn't just want to have it politically sprung on us, which has happened with emergency management expenses. And I want to get all of those standardized between fire, EMS and law enforcement.
And all of them should have their own budget line item for, or even possibly multiple line items for, uh, the town. That should be broken out separately.
It is.
Yeah, well, I've, I've looked at some of what we have and I, I know, I saw the MOU with what, um, with the, with the existing amount of money, I guess, that, whatever we send for our, our stipend from the sheriff's department. I'd like to see a little bit more information attached to that. But again, obviously we do whatever, however it is that you all want to do it. I just, I just think that, that taking it through the budget process, making it, um, however we want to categorize it, we just have to know that it's, it is a sunk cost. It is, it, I, I know, when I say that, I'm saying that from an accounting perspective. It's, we know we're getting a service, but, uh, you know, it's, it's, we, we send the money away, it's gone.
And I think, and I've never thought, um, I've never thought that coming before us, the fire department chief does it and, uh, and I think Susan Walton does it. It's not asking them to grovel before us for the money. I've never felt that way. It's part, as he said, it's part of the budget process. All our department heads do it. It's just a routine part of the planning our budget, so.
I agree, when it is a routine part of planning our budget, which I'm trying to make it and, and provide rules and procedures for, but we have been hit outside of our fiscal year and outside of our planning process. And you and I, I know for a fact we have shared this, you know, anger or frustration, not with the emergency management folks, but with our counterparts who help pay for these things. And I want to do everything that we can.
I know what you're saying.
Structure it and paper it.
Yeah, that's, and I think that's why it's extremely important and it'd be a planned out, examined process.
I think all parties involved can give us the requests, especially at budget time.
Yeah.
But there's nothing, so we can't ask for the CIP part of this. That new town manager can gather that and bring it back to us and we can discuss it. And we ain't what you talking about.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm just saying.
And, and get it going.
Yeah, that hard.
Yeah. It isn't.
We could certainly look at it as, if that's what you all choose to do as a recurring expense.
Because all these agencies will give us their request and if it's like the car issue and other items.
As the dog.
The pit unto a capital improvement, we can get that established for all the agencies, public safety stuff.
Right.
And put it in the CIP, not necessarily with ours, but it'll be, we call it the CIP for the public safety.
Yeah.
And we could have.
Which is sheriff, I mean, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying, I don't think it's, it's stressful for him to come. I don't think he minds it, you know, tell us what you, what's going, going on and what you need. And we want, you need to hear it.
Okay.
You know? And so, yeah.
I actually think we all agree.
It's more of a.
Yeah.
Done before, I mean.
It's more of a capital expense project, um, capital ex, yes.
It's a multi-year.
Yeah. Because we.
All right. Is that all, Mr. Boyce?
That's it.
Mr. Cardwell?
Uh, yes, so, uh, I provided everyone a letter and I kind of wanted to, I would just, I read this for me as a republic record. To the mayor, council and town manager, I am asking for support in creating an annual mayor for a day program for the town of Alphamatics to be paired with the Virginia Municipal League If I Were a Mayor essay program. Kelly Burke, mayor of the town of Leesburg, Virginia, I'm inspired this idea. Uh, this initiative aims to engage our youth in civic activities, foster a sense of community and inspire future leaders. The mayor for a day program would invite students, uh, from local schools and homeschool children of the county to submit essays on local governance, like community improvement and civic responsibility topics. The winning essayist would have the opportunity to be a ceremonial mayor for a day and tour the town of Alphamatics, gaining firsthand experience in municipal operations and maybe even getting photos with our local first responders and, and the tours of their facilities and vehicles. Where their last stop would be at the town hall to sign off on a proclamation and declaration to the town council on how we can improve the community. So, um, um, the councilwoman Spiegel reminded me of the BMLs If I Were a Mayor essay program. And this program would provide an additional recognition opportunities for our local students. So this, the partnership has the potential for seventh or eighth graders to receive a two hundred fifty dollar gift card and plaque for statewide winners and a one hundred fifty dollar gift card and plaque for regional winners. Uh, this partnership would enhance the program's educational value and promote our town's commitment to nurturing young talent and encouraging active citizenship. And then before I continue, I want to thank you, Councilwoman Spiegel. I'm just for, I'm encouraging me for, um, with this purpose. Uh, I was inspired by past mayors like Ronnie Spiegel and Paul Harvey when I was young and more recently by our current mayor's impact on me as I have been learning to be a part of this council. Um, I encourage my fellow council members to be passionate and actively participate in creating this, uh, program. I believe that this initiative has the potential to change a child's life. If it only costs us four hours a year to make a difference, it will be well worth seeing an upstanding young adult into the world knowing that their elected leaders believe in their ability to succeed. We are the body that can provide this opportunity and we should.
What are you trying?
So that is something that like we can, like, I'm going to go over and everything. So really, it's just an open concept.
What is the BML's age? I can't.
Um, so, yeah, so, um, I'm seven, I'm seven, I'm seven, I'm seventh and eighth grade.
Okay.
Why don't we do high school seniors?
Yeah.
Because then we can hire them. For anything. We can train them to operate a backhoe.
For a mayor, yeah. We'd have like a whole ballot full of kids that want to be a mayor. Present this to her, I could have commented on it.
Yeah.
He's been in an eighth grade classroom, he's been in a twelfth grade classroom. He would be, like, this is the perfect opportunity.
He would be perfect for a mayor? Is that what you're saying? I think he's already mayor.
Well, no, I'm saying, it would, I wish I had this opportunity when I was in eighth grade.
Exactly.
And twelfth grade. When he was there.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, I, like I said, he's been in an eighth grade classroom. A lot of those kids got him talking. And I think it would be something that would benefit a lot of our middle schoolers if they can see what actually goes on on a day-to-day, somewhat of a day-to-day basis in the town of Alphamatics.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
And I as well, when McKinley approached me and asked me if I would support this and I said absolutely, because I'm all for having younger students, an older two, get interested in civics. It, it's a wonderful, it's just not, it's not on the SOL curriculum, so it's not.
It's not on education, it's a human affair sometimes.
But it's so important, you know, it's so important in my mind, it's so important. So yes, I, I, I support it. And I also ask that it, we include Cornerstone Christian Academy students because they are very active in the, uh, this four-H speeches and all of that kind of thing. They are interested in the same things, so, um, and just to give them the opportunity. If they say, no, I'm not writing an essay, that's fine, but give them my opportunity.
Yeah, that's one of engaging.
Yeah, absolutely.
With that, any student, public, private or homeschool.
Homeschool could, yeah, also.
There will be a, uh, agenda item for your work session to work, to work session this, here this month. And then figure out exactly how you would like, uh, you, we'll have a proposal, tweak that how you see fit to, and to, to, to what you think is best, uh, moving forward. And then at the regular, in order for staff to take action, to, you know, to actually implement this program, in the March meeting, you would vote to implement the program or not. So, um, just kind of want to give you a heads up on the timeline on that. So that your work session, you can work out all the details and then go up for a vote in March.
And then it would be a good opportunity for Mr. Duck, Reverend Duck, to add that to some of the items he's going to feature and the promos that we just, yeah, that's, that would be a great idea.
Mr. Cardwell, specifically, find out what dates it applies for the BML?
Okay, yes, that is for, uh, March timeframe, so this would, if we did pass it this year, it would be effective January first of twenty twenty-six and then we can start the program then, uh, because. Because they should do it, they, well, they, they always do it late winter, early spring.
I mean, we could just sponsor our own $150 gift card.
Yeah, seriously, yeah.
But VML always puts the winner, their winner, mayor for the day, on the cover of the VML magazine. They always, so that's kind of neat, too.
Mm-hmm, yes, we would actually just, pretty much just do their rubric, and, and, and so essentially, there'd be like two copies. So one would go to VML, the other one would just go to us. And, 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 and then we could just decide amongst ourselves who would be the, who would be the final person. And we could always, like, you know, game plan to where, like, you know, runner-up is, you know, um, a, a vice mayor, and let's just say you have like five other students, and they want to be councilmen. Yeah, I mean, seriously, we, we, we literally had.
That's a good idea, McKinley.
No, honestly.
Really, I, I'm honest.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a good idea.
Can we do model council, like model United Nations?
No, seriously, yeah, no, 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 believe me. No, like, this right here, I actually wanted to give this as a gift to council, because we can really create something great with it, and I, and I want us to all participate in it. So, I mean, I have my ideas, but I'd rather see what everyone else comes up with as well.
Okay. Sandra.
Well, I hope that we don't. Okay, anyway, writing down ideas. Thank you, Mr. Cardwell, anything else? Mr. Garrett. Thank you. Mr. Simpson.
A couple of things, um, on the time notes. Well, do it for me, I guess. So, um, a couple of things, we've had a lot, uh, just reviewing the notes from the last meeting, and then watching some email traffic go back and forth. I think all of the stuff that we ordered under the, um, security cameras and compute type things are either in transit or have been delivered. That's something, I, I had a conversation in mid-December with, um, Mid-Atlantic Broadband, and they offered to give us, um, two years free of a fiber connection to downtown. I need to get that, I mean, it was a phone call, but you seem pretty hopeful about it. So, um, I'm gonna follow up with them. And, uh, CBCC spoke with some folks there, and they were supportive of us doing, um, or, you know, us making the purchases, and we're hopeful that we could, um, you know, do something with it. The security cameras are one piece, and that's a whole project and planning in itself. But the other piece is, you know, we do have, what amounts to fifty or sixty-five thousand dollars worth of artificial intelligence computer that we're gonna put somewhere. The goal is to put it in the depot or some other town in room. I just wanted to make sure that you guys would be supportive of us doing some sort of publicity with that. If there's anything against us putting it out there, that we're, you know, making this available for folks, and we don't exactly know what it looks like, but nobody knows what it looks like. But I was thinking about proposing a, a joint press release with Mid-Atlantic Broadband, and get, get everybody some goodwill. And, you know, of course, all of that would run through council, and everybody would have a chance to look at it before we send it out.
You want to get that together?
Yeah, 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 that's all, you know, I'll volunteer to draft that, but.
They had an, it was at an international AI conference in Paris, I think our vice president went to it. I wondered if he would want to go.
It's wild.
They had, they just had it last week. Vance was there.
But if there's no opposition to that, um.
Robin elbows was a VP of the country. And Elon Musk, maybe.
Oh, that's my other comment, I love what, um, they're doing in DC, and I hope we can.
I love it, too.
Hear.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll get our cards together and put everybody in a conference room, and we'll figure out all the problems. I'll bring the air mattresses. But that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Ms. Spiegel.
I would like to remind everybody that with, um, Mr. Boyce's, uh, transition from the planning commission to the Economic Development Authority, there is now a vacancy on the planning commission.
No.
Is he gonna do both, or what? You're gonna do, okay, that's not a conflict.
I've got big shoulders.
Huh?
I've got big shoulders.
You like the paycheck that you get.
He can push a barge across.
We, we got a legal thing on it.
Oh, okay, good.
And as long.
It's okay, it's fine.
If there is something, it'll be very obvious, and he can recuse himself.
Yeah, that's right.
It's not.
Okay, so good for you. Okay, so, I retract that comment. And, um, I hope that everyone stays safe if, whatever the weather's gonna be tonight and tomorrow. And that's all.
This is one thing that I, I just, um, thought about, that I didn't, I started to type of email, but I figured it's obscure. When I had the, because I live on Church Street, we went Church Street Waterline Project, the, um, original lines, of course, were metal, and my house's main electric service was grounded to the pipe. And so when it came through, of course, there's no longer a ground, and I didn't realize that for about seven months. And so I lived without my electrical panels grounded. So, I don't know, other people along Church Street might have that same conundrum and haven't realized it, but, um, older.
Yeah, it's, um.
Wow.
That's, yeah, that's, that's unfortunate, but.
Your dogs.
I think that maybe something there would be, um, we, we would want to do a notification. I mean, obviously, we really don't want to be on private property. Whenever we, we don't, you know, we don't have to. Which is almost, it's very rare that we would have to be on private property, but, uh, maybe just put out a notification and have, have them request an inspection or something. I'm not sure.
I don't know, it's, it's just weird, I don't want anybody to put a toaster in the bathtub and then realize that a breaker isn't gonna break.
Well, if that's how they're testing it.
Hair dryer would be more.
Oh, gosh.
Unless the hair dryer has a certain.
A hair.
They don't, they fix that now, that can't happen.
Electric toothbrush.
I still do not trust electricity in the water.
Oh, yeah.
I would, I would hope that most of the folks have a brown rod.
I would think the only other old house.
I, I didn't.
Yeah.
Is the one by where, um, Marty Charlie's mom lives. You know, that's an old house.
That's the oldest section of town, I mean, you've got a couple dozen houses that are.
Yeah, most of them have been updated, I guess, I mean.
What about the ones on, on Lee Grant?
I make a motion, we send a notification there on the water bill to all the houses infected with the water.
Those are old houses.
Yeah, that would make it really easy for them to understand, too, because they may not get it, like.
Yeah, that would, that would, I mean, it, we, we, being that we know that there, there may or may not be an issue, that would be the, the thing to do, and it really would be the responsibility of the homeowner to address, but we should let them know that it's a.
Yeah.
Is it a code enforcement thing that, I mean, we don't want to get, you know, heavy handed with it, but.
Well, it, it's really, if they, if nobody's pulled, if nobody's doing permitted work or doing anything like that, that's not really, I mean, you know, it's, it would be like, we suspect you're doing something wrong, so we're gonna look at it, right? It's not something we really want to.
We suspect we've changed something that you're not aware, it may affect you.
Yeah.
And we are informing you that it may affect you, and you may want to take proper corrective action if it does. And I think we would be remiss in our duties if we didn't inform them.
Would, would, would anybody understand that statement? Maybe you should recraft this.
I'll, I'll, I'll craft it.
Probably craft that.
Yeah.
Reword it as, as it needs to be conveyed. I, I did forget one last thing, I'm sorry, but, uh, I do need to communicate with each of you, because I'd like to get, uh, your availability and your, and your willingness for retreat. And I say sooner rather than later, obviously, it's gonna take some time to set that up, but, you know, before, hopefully, you know, within the next two months or something.
Two months.
It used to be in the fall, but.
Well, I would imagine we're gonna do more than one.
Yeah.
We thought we were gonna get to know the new town manager interim retreat, then we're gonna do the regular one. I think.
But do we need to do one, like, in the next couple of weeks?
Not in the next couple of weeks, absolutely not, no. But, um, it, we, in the next couple of months, it would be really fantastic to go ahead and, and have a day. Because w- w- not, not just us getting to know each other, but, um, one of the things, you know, everything that we've highlighted, everything that was highlighted in my recruitment brochure, the things that you made me aware of, that staff has made me aware of, all of this falls under what should be our strategic plan. And so, in order for me to do a strategic plan, I mean, I can, I, I can easily put one together, but that's not, it has to be your strategic plan.
Yes.
So, um, just kind of squeezing all that, like, into a day, we'll do our best, and that'll give us a really good start, right?
Yes, sir.
And then at some point down the road, we'll do another one.
And, um, and in, in the past, we've been having it at the hotel, I don't know if that's.
I think it's a good location.
That they've got.
The, where, I think the, I think it's a good location, because, um, you know, during the day, in a weekday, there's almost nobody there, you know, the workers are usually, I, I've, I've stayed there so much, I know. I know Dana, I know the manager, the general manager is from Dana. But, you know, during the week, during the day, the, the, most of the people that stay there during the week are, are construction workers, and they're gone. There's like nobody there during the day, so.
And, and.
And you know that they'll happily work with the town to set something.
And we had been having it on Fridays, right? On a Friday, right?
I did on Saturday for the May meeting, and I, I mean, I didn't mind that at all.
Saturday for when?
That was the retreat with campaign.
With the.
The thing at the Civil War Museum.
Yeah.
But I can also, I mean.
There are, there are many locations, we do try to move them around.
Yeah.
But.
And, you know, it.
Now you got two babies.
All, all, you know.
She might be moved by that.
Where you want to do it, when you want to do it. Makes no difference to me, it could be a weekend, weekday, hotel, anywhere, you know, uh, that's fine. I just, I just want to put that out there, that I need to be speaking to you individually, and try, you know, um, I don't know if when is good or something like that, it's gonna work for everybody, so, uh.
Yeah, just give us some dates, I guess, and, or do we need to call and check availability, I don't know.
We'll see what we can do about, once you get the dates that we're available, then we'll worry about the facilities.
Okay.
And go from there. Uh, we do have a motion on the floor by Mr. Garrett, is there a second to notify those potentially affected personnel of the Granite Waterline?
Consensus, and we trust the town manager.
Yeah, instead of voting on it.
Before you.
I believe I ought to tell you something.
Just the, the grounding issue.
Exactly.
Notification of effect, potentially affected.
I'll tell you something about Slavinsky on that.
Don't, I don't know if we need, we should, probably shouldn't notify the whole town.
I don't have any of that electricity.
So, no.
Have you checked if your electrical system is properly grounded?
Yes.
I mean, that's.
I'll be quick.
And they made some great branding back in the seventies, Sparky.
I, I know Sparky.
Sparky's.
I've seen Sparky.
So I need to invest in ground rotters, I'm just saying.
You might. You got me too nice.
All the older people here, which would be everybody but those two.
McKinley, too.
Yeah, McKinley, too, yeah, that's.
It's 2007.
But I think your, um, your house would be new enough.
Yeah, yeah.
A brand, it would be good.
That was 2007.
Wouldn't have to worry about that, I hope.
Well, that's kind of like why you're always here, don't buy an old house, the wiring, the electricity.
Throw a toaster into the toaster.
I, I do apologize, I just had another email come in that, that was a confirmation, I wanted to wait to be sure and tell you. Due to the winter weather, authorized trash pickup for tomorrow morning. They will be back on Thursday, if, for what, whatever misses there may be. But I, I just wanted to let you know, that's, that's going out, people are being informed. So they're gonna do trash pickup tomorrow morning, and then, and then, like I said, they'll loop back around Thursday.
Okay.
The al- the alternative is this trash sits out, and so, uh, that's the worst, to me, that's the worst.
So they're gonna do everybody tomorrow and Thursday?
They're gonna try to do as much as they can, but they can't do no more.
And if, if we have misses, they'll, they'll do like they always do, they'll call in.
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll send that over to them.
That's good.
That's a good idea.
Can't after the.
Well, the, my phone said three to five, then it said five to eight, so I'm just waiting.
Anyway, we'll poke our heads out tomorrow morning at 6:00 AM and see what it looks like.
Because I, I even thought it might interfere with the snowplows.
Yeah, you'll have to compete with school buses tomorrow.
You know, push.
Make speed progress.
Clean the sidewalks.
Before we get to an adjournment, I want to encourage everyone to look over the form, utilize it. I think it'll make our whole process a whole lot better.
Yeah, I definitely agree.
Try to make the meetings a whole lot more complete and efficient. With that.
Are you good? Do you need anything from us? Do you need?
Other than the.
Need the desk chairs?
Chocolate fountain?
I definitely don't need that.
Hang, I was hoping we could.
Chocolate fountain. I'm there.
No, I, I mean, it's, there's, uh, there's, there's quite, I've got a lot to do over the course of the next few months, so, um, trust me, I, I will, I appreciate that, and I, I will certainly come to you if I have any, any needs.
Have you eaten at Granny Bee's yet?
Yeah.